All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to orders. It's six o'clock. And we're gonna go ahead and start off with our invocation. And Jay, would you mind if we use the microphone?
Of course.
Everybody, please stay tuned for the plug when it's outdoors.
Let's pray. Lord, we come to you this evening and this morning, I was thankful for the rain. And now I'm thankful for the nice day that we've had in Central. And we just ask you to look over this council. I know we have a public hearing on HB 581 and what other business to do. I would just ask you to bless the council, let them think about everything and have and make the best decision for cities in your name.
Amen.
I'd like to be this to the fire of the United States of America. And to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rule call. Everybody on council is present, as we were all this morning. With that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. What we're here to talk about tonight, as we have for the past two meetings, we made a public hearings, is HB 581. And whether the city of Walnut Grove wants to opt in or opt out. And we have been to several meetings where we discussed HB 51 and the implications for the citizens and the city of Walnut Grove. When I first heard about HB 581, I immediately thought it was a smoke and mirrors type thing because if the city decides to opt in, we are stuck for the rest of infinity, having opted in. And what that means is, is that the citizens' property tax would be, I don't want to say linked, but their property value would be evaluated for this year at the 2024 rate. And then every year moving forward, it would only be able to go up 3% max. But it would be going up at the rate of inflation. Right now, in the next couple of years, it may not have a big effect on the city. Five years, 10 years, 15 years from now, it will have a very large impact on the city. Because as we grow and our services are needed more and costs go up, those costs of those expenses would exceed the amount of money we would be able to bring in in property taxes. If that were to happen, we would have no option but to raise taxes on property owners who need the difference. So to me, it was not a good plan. And in all the meetings that we've been to, the other mayors, council members, attorneys, everybody involved, PAX, etc., we've been to meetings where we have been with other council members and other mayors. And the majority of those people feel the same way about it, that it was something that was done in the higher levels as a way to show citizens that they were trying to do something good for them. Which, you know, we're all politicians. I understand what they're trying to do for the citizens. But in essence, it just doesn't work. They gave us the option of opting out. And you have to think, which is something Councilmember McPanahan said to me today. Why would they give you the option to opt out if they too didn't feel this wasn't a really good bill? So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and give every council member an option to speak a little bit more about HB 581. I don't want to miss anything. I want it to be very comprehensive and want to make sure the council understands exactly what we're moving on from that also. I'm going to go ahead and start with Councilmember McPanahan. And if you don't want to speak on it, that's okay too. But if you do want to speak something on it, let's go ahead and keep it a little brief. But before we go ahead, the citizens and ask for those who want to speak for it and against it, let's go ahead and make sure what we are clarifying exactly what HB 581 is and different things that we, you want to bring up.
I personally am in favor of opting out. I did vote no on my November ballot. But I had also done quite a bit of research at that point. I started my research early October to find out what I could about this bill. And based on everything and everything that's going on with it, the things that are happening currently, when I went to conference a couple of weeks ago, a lot of our representatives, our state representatives, I talked with attorneys that were there, I talked with other city managers, other city leaders. It was certainly the hot topic while we were there. And the majority there were in favor of opting out. The few people that were not were people like Covington, who I believe is opting in, so I wanted to point this out. And one of their reasons is that they're more rental properties than anything else. So it has little effect on them as opposed to where there are homeowners, which is kind of the opposite of the fact of what the bill was intended. So my feeling is maybe their intent was good, but they needed to do more research and planning for how it should be implemented in order to make a good bill. We can do something similar or same in-house if we think that's the right way to go for Walnut Grove. So rather than tying our hands where we have no options or future leaders, I was talking to Linda earlier today about it. You know, in a year, we can have two council members change. In two, two years from that, we can have three more people change. Why would we want to tie their hands to something that may not be good for Walnut Grove as well? Would there are other things that we can put in for the citizens at a local level? I'm kind of anti, well, not anti, I'd more listen, keep the government out of it as much as we can of our business, so to speak. And so putting it at state level or federal level, if we tie it to the federal table, to me, seems to go against that. So I would rather it be at the local level where we have our controls at that local level.
Thank you. Was there anything?
After listening to state representatives that actually wrote this bill and knowing why the bill was written in the first place, it doesn't make sense to want Walnut Grove to not opt out of the bill. From what I've, what I've been told by the state representatives, the reason the bill was wrote was for those counties or municipalities that everyone's property value has went tremendously in the past four years. Those municipalities that have not rolled back their rate or maybe not rolled it back enough. And it seems as if, you know, the services aren't intact with the amount that they're paying in taxes, maybe. That is who the bill was wrote for. And Walnut Grove and to Walton County in general, in my opinion, has done good, has done well with controlling the rollback rates and how much is collected in taxes and providing the services that have been provided. At first glance of this bill, as a homeowner, I'm like, yeah, save taxes, right? But at what cost are we willing to do that? It just doesn't make sense for us. And like Maxine said, nobody knows what's better for Walnut Grove than Walnut Grove. So I don't think that state or federal politicians should have a say in what we collect at a local level.
Linda? You, you don't have to speak if you don't want to. I mean, if you want, you just go ahead.
Well, I've talked to people on both sides of the fence, people that are for it because of cap on your homestead value, the homestead exemption. This sounds good. But looking deeper and talking to other people, and some people aren't for it, some people are for it. I actually voted for it because you read it. You read it on the referendum. I'm like, yeah, that might save me a couple of dollars. Because I'm old, one reason I thought maybe is because I'm older, I'm an older homeowner. And maybe it saved a couple of dollars here. But is, I think, in talking to people and trying to put all my thoughts together that if you save it here, you're gonna lose it there. So I'm in favor of keeping the options within Walnut Grove. That we, we can take care of Walnut Grove better than anybody else.
Very well said. Rachel?
I'm not sure what else to say. I feel like y'all said it all. One thing I will add, House Bill 581 being on the referendum was contingent on Senate Bill 1022 being passed. And when one bill is dependent on another from two different houses in our legislative branch, I feel like there's a lot of things we're gonna miss. And there were some things we missed when that made it to our ballots. Number one being, this is a kick the can down the road placating legislation that causes homeowners to say, yes, and I'm a homeowner, I said, yes, let's save on our taxes. But like Linda said, at what cost? And the cost would be this. We would lose revenue to the city for the amount of services that we have now. We are currently playing catch up on things that have been far too long neglected. Now we have emergency situations with our stormwater drain systems. And we are having to afford the cost of that. So any surplus that we think we have is probably going to be gone quickly. Just to handle some of that, I mean, just look at our ball fields. We finally got our ball fields back up and running. And it's a source of revenue for the city when we rent them out. But we're not charging people who aren't willing to do that. And we don't want to pass the buck on to citizens in other ways just to save them maybe $70 to $100 on their annual property taxes. It's, in my opinion, it's a definite no for me. I voted no on November 5th, and I say no again. State and federal governments need to stay out of our local municipal governments because I am responsible to my constituents for locals and Walnut Grove.
I can, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I do want to say that I know everybody has an open mind. And if we have anybody speaking in favor of or against, we will certainly listen to those people before making a decision because that's why they're here. Something else that we didn't touch on was, there is an option if we opt in to go ahead and put a FLOST in place, a 1% FLOST mail, but that's not necessarily true.
Well, I'm losing, I said FLOST, but get sales tax for those of you who don't know.
Everybody in the county would have to opt in. And we've already heard that there are a lot of cities, municipalities in the county who are still on the, on the edge for it. Because I don't think any of them have had a final vote on it yet. And so that FLOST is not a guarantee because then it has to go on the ballot. And going to help those type of things go in Walton County. Last time a T-SLOSS was put on there to fix roads, which is so important, it did not pass. So that's where we are with that. Thank you, everybody, for kind of sharing information about everything and, of course, keeping our minds open. At this point, I made the mistake on the agenda for the public hearing. We will go ahead and hear from those who would like to speak in favor of opting in. If there is anyone.
In favor of opting in or opting out? Wait a minute.
In favor of the
We're saying
in favor of the action. The action would be opting out.
Okay, so opting out. Go ahead, Jay.
It doesn't really matter how she describes it. It's as long as she describes it the way she did, it's in favor of opting in and in favor of opting out. Those sides need to be
Okay, okay. Okay. Those, any, anybody in favor of opting in?
Karen, right, in 2012, I'm in favor of opting out.
Linda, we're doing, opting in first. And there is nobody. Okay, nobody chose to speak, all right, for those who are in favor of opting out. Karen, ready? All right, thank you, Karen.
Because I think that is, as y'all stated, I think it needs to stay in-house. I don't think the state and federal government needs to be involved in it because we're a small town and we need to do what's best for us.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. I'm gonna go, is there anybody else who would like to speak about HB 581? No one else, okay. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn or close the hearing. And we're gonna return for a regular meeting. And look at the agenda approval. And I will add, we're moving to approve the agenda.
Any motion that we can
If there's a second?
A second.
Is there any questions or comments? All in favor of approving the agenda, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. We'll go on to the consent agenda. And if there are motions to approve the consent agenda. So you and then Karen, Rachel? Is there a second? Excuse me.
A second.
Is there any comments? Yes, ma'am.
Oh, no, I'm finished.
Are we still looking at 31-9?
Yes.
Yeah, we've made the attempt to change it. Unfortunately, the routing that has been put in place from previous administrators, administrations has not allowed me to make that change. We plan on bringing in CKH to come talk with our city clerk to get her up to date on QuickBooks and help with the accounting and payroll. And we will go ahead and, at that point, ask for their help in tracking down the routing that's been put in place. Because I cannot discern it and, because I'm not an expert in QuickBooks. But they will take care of that. I know I told you I would get it taken care of, but unfortunately, I was not able to do it myself, Linda.
Is that what your question was? When are you gonna have somebody come? Well, we're gonna have to look at the calendar. CKH is probably gonna come in within the next month. Our city clerk is doing some training on meetings and agendas and minutes and all that stuff coming up, hopefully. And we're just gonna have to see when they're available. But that is the plan. But the city clerk, Lynn and I have talked about having them come in to help her learn a little bit more about it. And they'll be doing that also.
Well, I'm looking at all of them. It's strange because we know where it needs to go. You know, it's, it's not a matter
But it hasn't always happened.
Well, I can't, you know, all, all I know is it appeared that it was entered correctly and it rooted somewhere unexpected. And I, I don't want to speculate as to why that is happening. But yes, there are things that seem to root different than what they're entered. I know I watched Sign in enter one thing because I would like to know myself. And it was entered correctly, but it landed somewhere unexpected. Okay, so we just got to find out why the routing is off, why it got off. It appears that it was with the original setup that it got off. But there's, there's no way to determine that, so.
I just don't see how it could be with the original setup. I'm not an accountant either, but if it's a problem with the original setup, why didn't, why didn't it happen all the time?
I don't know. It hasn't been I haven't scrutinized those records in that I can
You came pretty good on it, but it's been a year now. We will get it fixed, okay? We have already gotten a few of the accounts fixed with CKH's help. And we have a couple of more things to do. All right. So we're back to approving the consent agenda. We have a first and a second. Is there any other questions? Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go on to committee report. I know we do DDA to met, so, right? Is there anything for meetings to happen though?
Yeah.
We're gonna go on to the planning and zoning commission. Since there wasn't a meeting, you have Mr. Walter here today. He has spent a update for council. You all have it in your packets. And I will go ahead and read for those in attendance. We don't have any active rezoning cases, variances or anything like that. We have site plans under review, benchmark excavating, which is the office warehouse site development plans. They're ready for me. And then we have stone even subdivision construction plans, including the amenity area. We're waiting on those and just spoke with Joe about that today. They're working with the EBD on a little, few little things to adjust. And they should be submitted in the next week. And that includes the subdivision amenity area. PPI issued comments and we're waiting comments and we're waiting on their agency approvals. Elevation truck sales, council reviewed our site plans and we're waiting revised plan. The plans submitted to city were non-complete, and so we're asking them for a full set. Church of the Grove expansion, PPI comments addressed, agency approvals received, PPI stamp plans and issued approval package, and they have also been given their LVP. Mike's Tire Depot now on site and they're waiting for a supplemental plan review for the new location. Active recent landowners, permits issued by the city are the gas station, the on-play flood commercial phase board, LDP, S and E cabinet shop on Guthrie Cemetery Road and 1261 Industrial Parkway. And then other active projects in the Grove Park and envision Walnut Grove, the envisioning process is underway. And then inactive projects are maximum RS credit on Guthrie Cemetery Road at Guthrie Road. It's like, moving that. It's going on. Moving and moving. There's also an update from Precision Planning who is helping us with the pseudo plant upgrade. We are on task. We had to postpone the bid deadline by a week because there were so many questions. Precision was not able to get responses out as quickly as they needed to. I gave approval to postpone it for a week. It does not affect our timeline at all. The bids are due on the 18th at City Hall, 5:00 PM. And then on the 19th, we'll be opening the bids with Joe at City Hall. And everybody is welcome to come if they're interested. You guys are familiar with what it comes to us. The
February 18th? Okay. And the open date is Wednesday, February 19th at 1:00 PM.
Thank you, ma'am. And Lynn just learned today about accepting bids and what we need to do with them. So we're all set with that. Joe was in the office, gonna lie and share things with us. After we get those done, we'll go through the whole review. We'll make sure that they are valid, meaning that they have met the requirements of the document that they were working on to put in the bid. And then on the 27th, at our next work session on February 27th, Joe will be here and we will be going over the bid packages and what they recommend. And then on March 13th, at the council meeting, we will hopefully be voting on a bid award for one of the companies that put in a a package, okay? After that, then the notice of award document is done and we move forward with the construction. So we're moving. We're getting it done. Okay. Now we go on to library report. Ms. Dancy?
Hello.
Thank you for being here.
I'm happy to be here and I was very happy to get to attend the envision of Walnut Grove meeting on Tuesday. That was even fun than I was expecting because I like to hear all the perspectives that I hadn't even thought about. And so having the, the attendance and that many people and hearing all the different viewpoints was really helpful, I think. And, and making considerations and the impact on everything. But as far as the library goes, today was a good day. I came in this morning to a very generous donation. So I'm still deciding how to split that money up, but most of it will probably be spent for new books and programming. We've doubled our programs for this summer, so we'll have twice as many as we've ever had in the past. We have a flamenco dancer coming, which a lot of people are excited about. We have like a Nashville performer coming who will sing and interacts with the children and let them interact with her, which I think will be fun for our performers that we have at the library. And so the D R came first this morning and did photo ops. They donate books, patriotism books to our library, so that was great. Our Lego wall has been a huge success. They donated both of those. They're gonna be donating the flag, flagpole soon to the library. So I'm excited to have a flag in front of the library. So yeah, lots of great things, all of it good as far as I'm concerned. And it's interesting too, because we've been talking about the growth a lot. And people have been commenting, it's busy today, there's a lot going on today. It's crowded in here today. So we're definitely seeing the impact, but it's kind of nice that other people are so starting to realize, oh, we have a library here and, you know, there's always something going on. We have a new partnership with the Master Gardeners, so they've donated a seed library to, for us, which is wonderful. So every time a patron comes to the library, they can get a pack of seeds. It's seasonal, so they can plant, I mean, lettuces and beets and all kinds of things that you can plant right now. And then in the spring, they'll bring a whole other seed library with everything that can be planted in the spring. And if you look at your calendars that I've given you, in March, they're gonna start doing a master gardener gardening classes. Which is great because I want more adult programming. And, you know, these partnerships can only add to the library. Like, for example, my dream is to have a community garden at the library one day. And that the whole community can participate, but that the master gardeners or other people, citizens in community can really help get it going. The D R, master gardeners, oh, another program for adults that we started at the beginning of this year is a wellness program, which is the first Saturday of every month at 10:30. Those are fabulous. The next one coming up in March is called Nourishing Your Body. They're very good presentations and it's good to have sort of cassette roles and to interact with members of your community who are like-minded and interested in the same topics. So that's been really fun. I don't know if any of you got to see our Facebook page with our amazing Lego creation that we shared. Yeah, the duck, and they came back twice today to work on some more projects and attend Pokemon card swap tonight, which was fabulous. I think we had about 25 people come. We give away a free pack of cards to the kids every 10 minutes. I give a drawing so everybody who attends has a chance to win Pokemon cards. We've been doing that for a long time and we'll keep doing that forever. I'm really, you know, it, it's really fun. But I, I do that right before I come here, so I'm always super excited after that. Let's see, Valentine's Day is tomorrow, so we'll have treats and craft takeaways for all the kids, a variety of crafts that they can make, which will be fun. And we will be closed next Wednesday for our annual staff development day. That is when we get kind of in-depth training so that we can excel at our jobs, which is good for all of us. So I look forward to that every year. I think that's it. That's, that's a brief summary of a lot that's going on.
How does your staffing?
Staffing is great. We have a new young person. So, well, we have two new young people. But sometimes when it's a person's first job, it takes them a little while to get acclimated to being a professional. So, yeah, we're working on scale building with our young people. And there's definitely progress being made. I'm excited about getting them involved. I believe that anybody who works in the library should have some sort of ownership in the library. They should be invested in something so that they can develop a sense of pride. Once you're invested, then you just want to do Once you're invested, then you just want to do a good job, especially when your name is on something that you're doing. So that's something that we're working on, is getting them plugged into their passions. I don't make anybody at the library do the things that they don't love to do, or they're not ready to do, or they're not trained to do or prepared to do. But it's really fun to watch them bloom and blossom and excel at the things that they're really good at naturally. We are still hiring a cleaner. I'm hoping to interview next week. We will see. I do have a good candidate, no, sorry, I'm excited to get cleaner. We've been cleaning libraries since July.
Wow.
Yeah, and it's a lot of work, but I think we've done a good job, so.
You're bad.
So we put a lot of effort into it, but we also have pride in, in doing it anyways. Even if we had a cleaner, if things need to be done, we're happy to do it.
Great. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
We're gonna get ahead and move on to public comment. If anybody has anything that they would like to comment on or say something about, now it's time to come on up. He's not here. Albert's up here. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to old business. We're gonna be talking about the purchase of a Public Works John Deere Z930MZ Track Long Mower with three wheel, turf tires, and a 60-inch mulch on demand mower deck. Just that. That's it, right?
You did that right off your head.
Yeah, I did. At that last meeting, it was asked if our Public Works Manager could be here to answer any questions. So if council has any questions on this, now is the time to ask any questions. And Brian, if you would, would you just come on up? Thank you. Just in case there are any questions.
I have one.
All right.
Are you sure this is the mower you want? I'm sure you'd look at them, up and down and around and.
Yes.
Okay. The 60-inch, I mean.
Yes.
Nice. So it was, if I recall, what we had recommended, with the auto mulcher.
Yes.
It's called.
On the night, yes.
Okay.
We even looked into John Deere, Brian and I meet every Wednesday, and we found what we thought was a $1,000 refund or rebate. But Brian looked into that and found that since we are getting the government price, we're not eligible for the additional 1,000, which is okay. And we also looked at used lawn mowers that are relatively new, and those prices are the same thing.
Yeah.
Well, we got two used ones already, but.
Right.
There's character.
Well, I mean, I did a bunch of research online, and these were really close to the same prices that were even online if you order direct from John Deere. But I don't see why we wouldn't be eligible for the, I might argue that John Deere. You know, with the corporate.
He did. He did. He already talked with the company. Yeah, and they said that we're not eligible.
Okay.
And I think that's if you go online, direct to a distributor rather than going through the store that we are comfortable with.
Right, right.
Yeah. Yeah.
The warranties, you got, you talked about warranties?
Yes, it's three-year.
I recall reading it's three years or so many hours.
So many hours, but I remember what it was.
It seemed like it was 12.
Yeah, three years, 1200.
Okay.
And that's bumper to bumper only. And when the machine goes down, also, they'll get it back to you within 48 hours, and they'll give you a longer lawnmower also.
Oh, okay.
That's a pretty good deal they got going with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are we going with the one at John Deere's just for the conveniency for us?
Yes, and they have it in stock, awesome.
Good, okay.
Perfect. Works running up and down the street and that thing. I'm so excited.
Can I try it? I don't know if they're getting the sun down.
The sun down?
Yeah. I think they should if they need it to.
Is there sun down on that patch?
Yeah, it's like $170 or something. I forget how much, but.
I did look into that. I can look.
Find something we can get on the side if we need to.
Okay.
If you feel it'd be good for your guys.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know how important that is to you, but I saw, I thought, boy, I'd like that.
Good shade.
Yeah.
Shade does.
It's a hard time to get rough that.
Anybody have any other questions for Brian? Brian, I'd like to thank you for coming in today.
Yes.
I know you're on vacation today.
Yes.
But we appreciate you coming in to answer those questions.
No problem.
Thank you.
Everybody good? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and put that to a vote, y'all. Is there a motion on purchasing? For Public Works, the John Deere Z930MZ Track Lawn Mower with two wheel turf tires, 60-inch mulch on demand mower deck, and fully adjustable suspension seat with armrests, with the dealer warranty that was described.
So moved. What? I do want to add the price in there.
That's a good idea.
In the motion.
That's $13,570 and 33 cents.
Yeah. I'd just like to say with the price of up to 14, if that would work for everyone, just in case he gets there and there's something unexpected that's a few dollars.
Up to 14?
That's fine with me. I'm okay.
All right.
So whoever.
I'll make a motion to purchase the John Deere Z930MZ Track Lawn Mower with two wheel turf tires, 60-inch mulch on demand mower. Woo! And fully adjustable suspension seat with armrests for a price of up to $14,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? That being said, let's go ahead and put it to a vote. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Brian, if you want to excuse yourself, you're on vacation. Go for it. Really? Thank you for coming in.
I do that.
Okay.
Celebrate. So get some for the model with that, which is what to celebrate.
Yeah, right. Actually, Robert enjoys the other one, doesn't he?
He does.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we're gonna go ahead at this time and move on to the Magnolia Drive pulver storm repair. I put in front of you this document right here, okay? I mean, it's easy for you. The package came with estimates and everything like that. This is the page that came from our, I'll call her, as needed engineer. And he has put together, using three different companies, with their best prices, to come up with what we need for this. There's also a contingency of 15% recommended in there, like we do with most projects, okay? And it would come out to, with that contingency, a $128,881.61, which is still very reasonable for that job that is over there. And since we were not, did not move on it in the last year as quickly as we needed to, we're bringing it to council for a vote this evening to get the go-ahead or not to move ahead and let's get this fixed. The stormwater has been patient long enough, in my opinion. This is something that's been going on for several years. And I'd like to see where we, that we could get this done. That's my opinion. Are there any questions about any of these?
No.
Any?
We've got the board, or I mentioned it to you about, this isn't the only drainage issue we have in the city.
No, it's not.
Do we, are we looking at and creating a priority list of what needs to be first?
Yes, we will be.
Then how do we know this one is the worst?
Because the guy's front yard is falling in, and it's leading towards the road, and it could be an issue. Our engineer that we brought on has been over to this area, and as you have seen in some of the other packets or information, he has said that this is a project that needs to be done as soon as possible because of the implications of it possibly leading. If the culvert under the road collapses, that means that people in Magnolia Springs will not be able to get out or get in. And he has seen all of the other stormwater issues. He walked around and programmed with both myself and our public works manager, and looked at all of the other areas, and none of them are to the extent of this right here. We're gonna get that information.
What information?
The chart of priorities.
Which ones needs to be.
If you'd like it, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll also be doing a schedule for road paving, which we will, more than happy to share with council. Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. With that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and ask, because there is a motion on the Magnolia Drive pulver and storm repair.
The motion that we foresee with the storm repair on Magnolia Drive is presented to us.
Not to exceed at the.
Not to exceed the $128,090. Round it off.
Is there a second?
Sorry, I'll go second.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, so all in favor of proceeding with the repairs of the Magnolia Drive pulver and storm repair, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. We'll go on with the resolution HB581 at this point. We're gonna make a decision on that tonight, and we already talked about it, and I would ask if there is a motion out there on resolution HB581.
I will make the motion that the City of Walnut Grove opt out of HB581. I'll need you.
And I will second that.
Yes, sir.
No, I don't have anything. I'm just standing up because.
I just ask him, was that sufficient?
For any more discussion?
The only discussion I have is, do we do the resolution tonight?
Yes, and the mayor, mayor or cabinet.
Okay. Just in case. All right, let's have a vote.
And for that, that resolution authorizes the clerk and mayor for Tony and the mayor to work together to get all the appropriate documentation to the DCA.
And we just re-received the certified information from the paper. We have copies ourselves, the book, we have it all in a folder.
I know we're on a timeline with Jeff. We're down less than two weeks now.
Yes, we're gonna get it out.
Y'all are way earlier than everybody else around the area, so.
That's good. That's good. No. So yes, so let's hold a vote. All in favor of opting out of the City of Walnut Grove, City of Walnut Grove opting out of HB581, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Okay. Thank you all. Hey, keep it organized. All right, we adopted a resolution a little while back, and in that resolution, I did not fetch it. We did not have in the resolution information about trees. Everything else mostly in there. You've had the new ordinance, I spoke with our attorney, and they said that the proper procedure would be to re-adopt the ordinance this evening, Chapter 31 of the vote ordinances tonight, including all of the changes, or a few changes that were put in. And so that's what we have in front of us. And so I'm gonna ask if there is a motion to re-adopt Chapter 31 of the vote ordinances of Walnut Grove, Georgia to amend the certain enforcement provisions to provide for several later moving to repeal putting ordinance to provide effective date and for other purposes. So. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
One question, just so I know the answer for myself, and this is very pertinent. So I will admit that right at time. There is a thing in there about stumps not making for 20 inches.
I knew it. I knew it.
And I happen to have a stump that's five feet tall, purposely subbed. What happens with that? Am I required to cut it?
It's a, by law, yes, but as an enforcement issue, I don't, I don't know if a good enforcement officer.
So you can't tell us a stump.
I'm gonna face on it. I have a suggestion. My neighbors across the street built beautiful birdhouses. I'll ask if they will give you one. They have trees that are cut off and are not planted, and they plant birdhouses on top. And they're fully decorated.
Okay, decorating with black.
Enforcement issue. I mean, it needs to be done. It needs to be done uniformly, but I mean, there's, there's some practical aspect to that.
Why do you have to do a very?
No, no.
There will be an enforcement issue, and it's not something.
Yeah. And I say that because there's some other things around.
It's like different than clear cutting, you know, six feet tall trees across the tops.
Right. Well, there's some other things, but I won't bring those in. I'll just break mine up as my standpoints. Thank you.
Okay, so we are, we have a first and a second for the reading option of Chapter 31. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of re-adopting Chapter 31 of the vote ordinances, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. And we'll go on to the election of mayor pro temp. The mayor pro temp serves a one-year term. The mayor pro temp can be the same person from the year previous. It can be a different person. And this is up to council, and we talked about that. We're gonna have this on the agenda for this time. And so I'm going to ask if there is a motion out there to elect a person for the mayor pro temp position.
I have a motion to re-elect Eric Moss as our mayor pro temp.
That's something you're able, you're willing to accept?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay.
Thank you.
I hope in the future that someone else has the opportunity to be a mayor pro temp. I do like, I appreciate the fact that you've consented to do it again because I know you know what you're doing up here. You're one of the longer-term serving in this position, and I think sometimes it takes just a little bit of time to become accustomed. And actually, I know everybody up here could do it, but sometimes it's a little nerve-wracking when you get here. And you might, I think somebody with the years that you have behind you, you'll serve it well again, and I appreciate you doing it. Thank you.
Thank you for the note.
All right, we're gonna go on to reports for Public Works. Oh, you're in it, right? Sorry. All right. Public Works Sewer Plant, well, it has been a challenge with sewer plant cold weather and hot weather, cold weather and hot weather, but they have kept it up. Still no issues or no repairs were necessary. City Park, they're finishing up some general repairs on picnic benches, swings, stuff like that. We're kind of getting everything cleaned up that hasn't been able to get done yet. They went into, the crews went into Forest Plant, they cleaned the herbs and cash bases and kept stormwater going well. If you drive through Forest Plant, they did a very nice jump in there as they do on all of the other streets. So that really nice, that they got in there. And we had to remove a pine tree from City, from City Hall that fell in the snowstorm, and it was like a professional crew in there removing the tree. They did an outstanding job. And the trucks and lawn mowers have been serviced, preparing for spring mowing. Something that they didn't put on here, Public Works and Public Works Manager met with someone from our insurance company, any section of our. met with someone from our insurance company, a section of our insurance company who works with them. And they had some training, and they're also doing more training coming left this week. There's gonna be two going at a time. One is gonna stay behind because we do need to keep them here in case of any kind of over and safety. So Brian and Fred will be going off with the first one because Robert was here for the last time and Fred was not. And then they will take turns switching as they go for more. And they're gonna be going next, for the next three months consecutively. They go to Gainesville and they get training on safety in traffic, motor vehicle safety, and then hazardous waste. So they're gonna be doing all that also, which is just wonderful, and they're very excited about it also.
Sure, you mentioned getting the park ready for spring in summertime. Didn't we get the swinger flats?
That is on the list. That is on the list. I believe there's actually two structures that do not have swings. And so they are gonna be getting both of them. Yeah, Brian and I worked on a list together, and they're slowly but surely knocking it off one at a time.
And we're be, we'll be thrilled. She loves it.
It sounds, yeah, they're doing a really nice job of that. We even got them some, I talked to Brian, and we need some polo shirts for your training. He said that would be nice. We got him some polo shirts. That's what we're gonna be talking today. They have Public Works polo shirts.
Yeah, they need to go all feeling good about themselves, just like we all do.
Okay. City Clerk, Ms. Lynn.
Ladies. Okay, the citations were, for the state patrol were two. And for the county, there was 11. There was nine ball field rentals and zero for the pavilion. And our accounts, the general operating account is $757,354.55. The sewer service district account is $9,312.31. This lost account is $1,088,366.98. The money market is $1,486,441.30. The DDA account is $90,253.21. And the money market account is $1,075,474.79.
Thank you.
I report. Okay, Lynn and I are working with I Works. We have training twice a week, one for each department that we're working with, and we're learning the system, entering employees' names and different projects or things that they deal with in an effort to get that update as quickly as possible for our Public Works and our code enforcement departments to start utilizing that after they are trained, but we're setting up the system. Envision Walnut Grove, the next meeting is on March 11th. We just had the first kickoff and first workshop on February 11th, and it was a great success. We had almost 60 people there, which was outstanding. And great comments from a lot of citizens. We just received some franchise fees from Walton E&amp;C in the excess of $80,000. They came by and delivered the check themselves, which was nice. And so I got to meet some of them. We applied for the L-MAG and we received over $20,000 to go towards stormwater repairs and paving. The ball field at the request of some of the people over there, and since the restrooms are not open, we have a port body being delivered this week, I believe.
It's there.
Friday. Oh, it's there? All right, good deal. So that we have something that can be used until the bathrooms are opened up again. We announced at the Envision Walnut Grove that the light that through Cemetery Road is being installed, and it's actually being installed now. They started putting up poles and everything like that, so that's gonna be a lifesaver for a lot of our students and staff and fire station folks and everything like that. And there's just a lot of things going on in the city, a lot of things. But it's all going very well, so that's really it for me. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the town hall portion. If anybody would like to come up and ask questions or make any comments and whatnot, now's the time.
Okay. I'd like to make one comment, if I can. Am I allowed to speak at town hall?
We can go to council comments now.
For anybody who is interested, if you missed attending our Envision Walnut Grove event from February 11th, please check us out on our YouTube channel at Walnut Grove, Georgia on YouTube. We did record it, and we will record it again on March 11th, but we would love it if you could show up. And thank you again to Church at the Grove for being amazing and offering us the space for our vision and for providing audio visual support. It's amazing.
Lynn, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Maxine?
I just want to put out a challenge to our citizens. Let's double the attendance at the next invasion meeting.
That would be nice.
I've gotten good comments back from people that were surprised. I got a phone call today that really didn't even know about it going on. It said, my gosh, y'all are actually having citizens participate with things. And they had gotten word and was telling me about it, what they had heard. And so they plan to be at the next meeting. The challenge, people, come out, come out, participate. Next one, we understand, supposed to be a lot of fun.
Absolutely. You get to create a city, our city. Yeah. And Erica?
Well, my son and his ball team has enjoyed the ball field. It has been extremely nice to have practice within five minutes of my house. Unfortunately, today didn't get to. There was a little bit too much rain last night. But then, please tell everybody and tell them to tell their friends, please come to the March 11th Envision Walnut Grove meeting. It was so eye-opening to hear the different perspectives from everyone. I felt like it was just a breath of fresh air to see the citizens actually participate, give their opinions, whether they thought that the opinion was liked or not. Everybody had the freedom to say what they wanted to say, and that was nice. I really liked that. I have one question. The YouTube channel, is it Walnut Grove GA or is Georgia spelled out?
Georgia is spelled out.
Okay. That's it?
All right. Do we have executive session tonight? With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Is there a second?
I said, go ahead.
I second.
All in favor?